I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for April 8, 2008. May we have the roll call for City Council? Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefian.
Here.
Aaron Najarian.
Here.
And for the Agency, please. Agency members, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefian.
Here.
Chairman Draymond.
Here.
Okay, may we have your report, please?
The Jennifer, the April 8, 2008 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was postponed on Thursday, April 3, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, may we have the first item?
Item number one is Director of Public Works and Director of Development Services, continued from April 1, 2008 regarding railroad, highway, at-grade crossing installation and safety enhancement projects. Now, 1A is a council resolution adopting Spec. 3326 and related plans to extend Flower Street between San Fernando Road and the airway to install an at-grade railroad crossing and directing City Clerk to advertise for bids.
Um, shall we say this as a group?
Just one moment, I'm sorry, more to that, if it was only that simple. And at B is council motion authorizing increase in the contingency amount for the professional services agreement with DMJM Harris, Inc. by $200,000 to cover bidding and construction support design services by the Flower Street Extension Project. At C is council motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Carter and Burgess, Inc., in the amount dot to exceed $236,113 plus contingency of $30,798 for construction management services for the Flower Street Extension Project. At D is council motion increasing contingency amount for DMJM Harris, Inc. by $222,000 to cover additional storm drainage design services on San Fernando Road for the Grand View Avenue and Sonora Avenue at-grade crossing improvement project. And at E is agency resolution appropriating $2 million to provide funds for safety improvements of the at-grade crossings shared by the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you, is there anyone who wanted to address this item? I have several joint meeting cards, I think they're all for the joint meeting with Housing. Okay, this one. I think she's for the House. CDPG meeting, oh, CDPG, okay. Well, there they are, there's four council motions and one agency resolution. Um, let's open up the discussion or motions, Mr. Weaver.
Since I wasn't available last week, um, I did watch the tapes of the meeting, and I'd just like to give my own viewpoint. Uh, as was noted, um, I was only council member here when the Disney project really got rolling, and I do know we closed two crossings of San Fernando to build one. Um, I also know we've gone through extensive, um, discussions with state, engineering companies, whatever, to create state-of-the-art crossings at all of our intersections in Glendale. I do know, in looking at it, uh, the Disney complex, which was unanimously approved by council, I think before me even, uh, alluded to the fact Grand View and Flower Extension and the overpass that's now being started would be the three ways most of the traffic would get in and out of that complex. Western Avenue on-off ramps are also being improved. Um, it's been said a lot that, um, the traffic is coming out of, um, uh, out of Disney, the Flower, they go up to Pellicone, you'd really have to do a zigzag to use Pellicone. Anybody that chooses to, um, that wishes to get on the, on the 5 North is going to turn left on San Fernando Road and go up to Western. Anybody that wants to go east or west on the 134 is going to go south on San Fernando Road. The only people that are going to try to get up to Glen Oaks are those people that live in that sector, which is going to be a minimal number. Nobody's going to take up, go through the Pellicone area, get on Glen Oaks, which bends, as you know, away from the freeway, and you'd have to go clear down to Pacific, which is already heavily congested to get on the freeway. So it just makes sense, everybody is going to use, um, those streets. Um, also, I heard all the comments of why you should or shouldn't, but there was one thing that, uh, was not brought up last week, and, um, I'd like to have some input on it, namely, what if we refuse to do this, um, what is going to happen to the development agreement with Disney and the mitigation measures with Disney? Um, I've seen enough of their master plan development that the parking structures, a good many of them, will front on Flower Street. If Flower Street is not there, the master plan goes down the drain. Other changes would have to be made. So I'd like to ask our legal staff, what happens if we deny? What is in the development agreement and in the mitigation measures, and what's the financial impact of the city if we don't?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Chair, members of the Agency, Council Member Weaver, have taken a look at the development agreement, and the development agreement does obligate the city to construct the Flower Street Crossing as a capital improvement project. Uh, the failure to, and that, and that capital improvement is to be constructed without cost limitation. In other words, all costs related to that improvement are required to be paid by the city. That's specified in the development agreement. The timing for that is also specified in the agreement, and, uh, as we know, that the original timing for that has passed, and now we're, uh, it was to have been completed on the 31st of December of, uh, 2006. Um, however, um, it also provides that in the event that, uh, the city does not, fails to timely complete those improvements, that that failure does not necessarily entitle the developer to damages unless that failure results in a delay in the completion or construction of an additional phase. We don't know at this point in time whether or not that in fact would occur. However, what is also available to the developer in terms of enforcement would be the failure to take actions which are, uh, an obligation of the city would be a default under the contractual obligations of the DDA. They could notice us of a default, uh, and we, uh, the city would have 120 days pursuant to the agreement to commence the cure and diligently pursue that cure. Failure to do so could result in, uh, them seeking damages, which would be actual damages that occurred, and including consequential damages, but those are capped to the extent, uh, pursuant to the agreement that they are, uh, third parties who, um, they lose rent or third parties for excess occupancy costs to third parties that they can't, like, house on the Disney site. So actual and consequential damages. They are also entitled to seek both under the DA with the city and the owner participation agreement with the agency, uh, their remedies and equity, which would be for specific performance of the obligations under those agreements, uh, declaratory relief and other actions available at law, and at equity. Uh, so in summary, it would be a contractual breach if the, if the city failed to undertake its obligation under the DA.
And financially, within large parameters, what kind of dollars can we potentially be talking about? I mean, a broad range, $100, $1,000, what range?
Very, very difficult question to answer, and I, I wouldn't, uh, I am not involved, for example, with leasing of, uh, space for, uh, that would give me the sort of information or background that I would enable me to answer that question with any specificity.
Well, if I want to say it could be at $10 million or more dollars, that is potentially possible?
I, I wouldn't want to speculate that.
Well, I'm speculating, from what I understand, it could be well over $10 million that the city would have to pay.
It's their actual damages that occurred as a consequence of failure to complete that, uh, that improvement, and so if that delays them in the completion of a phase or the commencement of a phase, and depending on, the reason why I hesitate is that we don't know what the size of that, that phase would be, so the range of potential exposure is quite broad.
I've seen some preliminary drawings of the phases, the stages, and the city could be liable for multimillion dollars, and I would not care to take on the Disney attorneys.
Mr. Starver.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Weaver has concluded his comments, I thought it might be useful just by way of background and, and maybe to focus on sort of the, uh, the positive perspective on what's proposed here.
That's fine.
All of this, all of this comes to you as a result of a council action to approve a settlement agreement with the CPUC and all the various parties, MetroLink, Caltrans, Disney, and the city, taking a step to commit considerable amounts of city resources to upgrade the safety improvements at all of the crossings in Glendale. Sonora, Grand View, Flower, which would be a new crossing, and as Mr. Weaver pointed out, which was, included the closure of two other crossings already implemented, and the commitment of funds, $2 million into escrow to be available to MetroLink to work with us and the City of LA in closing the Doran Street Crossing and improving, uh, the crossings at Broadway, Brazil, and Chevy Chase, uh, the site of the, uh, the major tragedy in 2005. Uh, all of that was a significant commitment on the part of the city to see, uh, the upgrading to a level, I think, unseen throughout Southern California region, which is why, uh, MetroLink views this project, and I mean, a project of, of improving all of the crossings, as a model for other communities as they pursue their, um, what do they call it, not safe, sealed corridor projects throughout Southern California. A significant step in commitment by the City Council in Glendale, and again, a model for all of Southern California in how to address rail safety, incorporating what is state-of-the-art safety improvements at every one of those crossings. Uh, I'll note that, um, you previously, the City Council previously approved, uh, the CPUC agreement and authorized the city manager to take all actions to execute all documents in furtherance of the CPUC decision, as well as appropriated funds for the Flower Street Crossing. This brings back to you steps needed to now begin to, uh, complete those commitments with respect to approval of the plans and specifications for the, um, Flower Street Extension and related plans, support services, as well as appropriating the $2 million you committed to, uh, to MetroLink for upgrading and installing safety improvements at those crossings south of the 134. We're prepared to answer any questions you might have.
If there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Eusefian.
Um, Mr. Mayor, our city, city manager gave us, I think, a four-page kind of, uh, document that basically goes through from October of 2000, what happened, and so on and so forth. Could you kind of go very quickly through the events? I'll tell you why, because I have received several emails from several individuals talking about us not doing the SEQA review, and, and it's old, and how could you do this? And in, in this sequence of events, apparently some of that SEQA review has been taken care of, so it'll be helpful for people to know that this didn't happen overnight.
No, no.
It started, started before I even came to this council, started in October of 2000. So could you very rapidly go through the dates and?
Actually, the person who can more rapidly do that is the person who prepared the chronology, Kathleen Truman, who's special counsel for this project. Kathleen, let me call on you to, to the extent an attorney can, briefly summarize the chronology.
Oh, that's a slight.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Truman of Truman &amp; Elliott, and I am special counsel, I'm a special counsel for the CPUC proceeding, and I am assisting the city, um, during the review process and implementation of the settlement agreement. Um, you are absolutely correct, Councilman Eusefian, that the clearance, the SEQA clearance for this project occurred a long time ago. Uh, you had a negative declaration that was certified by the city in July of 2000, authorizing the closure of the Beacons and Allen at-grade railroad crossings and the construction of the Flower Street Crossing. Um, and the Flower Street Crossing was mitigation for the closure of the Beacons Crossing, in recognition of the fact that if you closed Beacons, you would create a traffic impact unless you opened another avenue from the redevelopment area to San Fernando Road. Uh, the City Council vote on that was unanimous, there was no legal challenge to the negative declaration at that time. And as you go forward, then you went through the CPUC process the first time, and unfortunately, while the city closed Beacons and Allen, it did not start on the construction of the Flower Street Crossing as originally designed before the CPUC approval expired. So the city went back, got new CPUC approval, or applied for the CPUC approval, um, and at that point, and that was in July of 2005, um, at that point, Pellicone Estates Homeowners' Association participated in the CPUC process, as did Disney, as did CPUC staff, MetroLink, Union Pacific Railroad, and Caltrans. Uh, during this process, efforts were made to develop a settlement agreement that would be more global in nature and provide safety enhancements all throughout the railroad corridor in the city of Glendale. Um, so what happened is you had the settlement agreement, which the City Council has already approved, and, uh, we came back after the, the CPUC approved, um, the settlement agreement and authorized the construction yet again of the Flower Street Crossing. Staff came back to you in early April of 2000. At that point in time, you authorized staff to go forward with doing their environmental review of the settlement agreement, and the staff did so, came back to you in May, on May 17th, um, of 2007, with its review, subsequent review of the Flower Street Crossing. What staff did is it went back and looked at any changes, um, that were made to the design, improvements to the safety of the crossing, looked at all of those things, including the raised medians, the Ford quadrant gates, the construction of a refuge area along San Fernando Road, the elimination of through-traffic movement into the Pellicone, um, neighborhood, and determined that these changes were not so substantial as to require major revisions to the 1999 negative declaration, and that's the SEQA standard. All of these are in the, um, May staff report, um, and I know one of the issues that also came up was noise, um, to be generated by, um, if you put in a crossing at Flower Street, will there be additional noise because trains toot their horns or blow their horns as they pass each crossing? Well, if you go back to the, um, May 15th staff report, I may have misspoke and said May 17th, it was May 15th, the staff actually looked at that, and here is what they said, and I will try and be brief. Um, they looked at the modifications made to the design, and in particular, as indicated in the initial study to the negative declaration, the increase in ambient noise levels in the vicinity of the proposed crossing were considered less than significant with incorporation of mitigation measures. None of the changes made to the original design will alter these noise impacts. So staff made the determination that the changes to the Flower Street Crossing that were made after 1999 did not increase the noise impact in any way whatsoever, to require subsequent environmental review. So on May, in May of 2007, what the staff report said was that it looked at all of these changes and determined that the changes to the design were not so substantial as to require major revisions to the 1999 negative declaration. This is proper to have gone through this analysis, to, to look at the changes, and to go back to the negative declaration, even though it was drafted in 1999 and, and approved by the city in 2000, and there's case law on that, um, subject, interestingly enough, the case is called Snarl Traffic. Um, so, and that is absolutely appropriate to rely on, uh, in that case, it was a nine-year-old negative declaration. Staff went back, looked at any changes to the project, determined they weren't substantial or creating a new and significant impact that hadn't previously been analyzed, and relied on that prior negative declaration. Um, the other thing that has come up is some of the modifications to the design for Flower Street Crossing occur within the right-of-way of MetroLink. There is a specific SEQA exemption for modifications made to improve railroad traffic within the right-of-way of MetroLink. This has been used on many, many other projects by MetroLink, not surprisingly, um, the City of Glendale hasn't really used it in the past because it's not in the business of the railroads, um, unlike MetroLink. Um, and that, that exemption, um, is perfectly applicable to this situation where, in particular, you have the advanced preemption that was installed at Flower Street and will be installed on the other at-grade crossings as well, to ensure that traffic is moved off the crossing prior to the arrival of trains. Um, and that, all of that, those things are within the right-of-way, and so they qualify for the exemption. So the city did that, it also then filed after the City Council's decision, and the city filed a notice of determination and a notice of exemption with the county clerk. And at that point, um, you have notice of your determination, um, there's SEQA provides for a very short statute of limitations, uh, the time to challenge has passed on that, um, and, but you have plenty of, plenty of information to back that up.
It was 35 days.
Exactly, 30 and 35 days.
And it, it was over by June 18th, 2007.
Correct, correct. And also, the other thing, you've also approved, while it's not on your agenda today, you have gone through the review process for Grand View and Sonora as well, and that is all finished, it's done, and you will be implementing those safety enhancements as well, which is wonderful. Um, and the time to challenge those has passed. Another issue that has come up is whether you're kind of splitting up the settlement agreement. Um, justifiably so, what you have done, as the City of Glendale, as you said, okay, we are the local agency with exclusive jurisdiction over Flower Street, Rand View, and Sonora. We can make sure that the safety enhancements are implemented at those crossings. Down to the south, south of the 134, you share jurisdiction with the City of Los Angeles, and the settlement agreement provides that you've got to work with the City of Los Angeles to review all of those, the implementation of those safety enhancements and the closure of Dorn, whether the environmental review, you also have to obtain their, um, participation from the City of LA for, um, their contribution to the cost of implementing these. So there is a reason why they have been split, and all of the implementations north of the 134 have what's called under SEQA independent utilities, so you are fine on that issue as well. Happy to answer any other questions, I hope I wasn't.
Thank you, is there a second to the motion?
Second. I was going to make the motion of 1A, B, C, and D for the council.
Is there a second to 1A, B, C, and D?
Second.
Just only one quick correction for the record, I believe the April date that was mentioned was April 2000, it's April, April 3rd, 2007.
Seven, yes. There it was. Is it card on this? Patrick Masiehi?
On this, right? On this item? No.
No. Mr. Masiehi, your time, let's start.
Members of the Agency and members of the public, what we're seeing here today is a push to create a at-grade crossing in the midst of what we just went through a couple years ago, when 11 people lost their lives. This council here today is going to spend $6.2 million of your tax money to create another dangerous at-grade crossing. And the public should be aware of what this project is all about, because when they look at these items, they're, all they see is a Flower Street at-grade crossing, and many people don't know what this is. But the fact of the matter is, one of you who stood in front of cameras back in 2005 and told the world that you were against at-grade crossings and you wanted to eliminate all of them, is now considering voting for this. And the public should be aware of Councilman Bob Eusefian and what he's about, what he's about to do today, because you cannot tell the world one thing when the cameras are there and change your mind and say, "Well, you know what? It looks like this might be a safe crossing." No, there is no such thing as a safe crossing. I want to thank Mr. Frank Quintero, and I want to thank John Draymond for standing by the people and being the champion of the people and fighting for the safety of the public. So what you do today, here, in this room, will have ramifications, either from Disney or from us. Thank you.
Mr. Eusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a couple of things clear, all of a sudden I've become the villain. Went to the State of California, went to State of, to Washington, asked them to do railroad crossings that are either over or under. State of California will require a $6 billion to do all of those. I know because I was a member of SCAG, and that is what the number was about three years ago. I asked to, asked the question from the attorney, who was very bleak about how they answered it. You know, sometimes when you take a lot of votes in this city over several years, you kind of forget what you voted and how you voted on certain things. I will tell you one thing, on June 18th, 2007, when, when the vote came for the SEQA, it was unanimous, June 18th, 2007, okay? It was all here. It was unanimous. Then we go there. Vote was taken on the consent calendar with five council members in favor, Draymond, Quintero, Weaver, Eusefian, and Najarian. Let's go back a little bit more. Uh, going back, on May 15th, 2007, the City Council approved motion approving the implementation of the update designed for the Flower Crossing and approved by the CPUC, and approval motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with DMJM and Harris, and so on and so forth. Vote was taken on the consent calendar with five council members in favor, Draymond, Quintero, Weaver, Eusefian, and Najarian, that's when we spent over 5.8 million on that. Um, going back, on August 22nd, 2006, this was before Mr. Draymond was here, there was a closed session on the City Council, and for council member present, yours truly not present, during which staff requested authorization to move forward with the drafting of the settlement agreement with all parties and the CPUC. Council members presented, agreed that staff should proceed, okay? On September 19th, 2006, there was a closed session of the City Council regarding the final settlement agreement. City Council authorized execution of the settlement agreement in favor with a vote of 3 to 1, 1 abstention, 3 in favor. So, let's, let's not play games with words in here, these are the facts, these are the records, you could go down with city clerk and pull them out and look at it yourself, okay? Bottom line is, I learned one thing in government, there is no such thing as black and white, shades of gray. It's not what you want is what you can get. At the time, what was the best. If some of you have HBO, I'm pretty sure you have watched John Adams, and even in 1700s and 1800s, they didn't get what they wanted, they had to negotiate, that's how this country was put together, okay? So the reality is, yes, I would like to have an overcrossing or undercrossing. Am I going to get it? No, I tried very hard, didn't go to closed sessions, threatened to go and vote and do all kinds of things, went to Washington, went to Sacramento, bottom line is, I hit wall after wall after wall. Mr. Masiehi and some of you guys have $6 billion you can come up with, or you can convince the legislature, I will be your champion. I was there, none of my colleagues were there, to see what happened that day. I closed my eyes, I can see those images as vivid as it is, nevertheless, this project mitigates 90% of that, it's not 100%. Even with a crossing over an underpass, you may have some accidents, train will not hit it, but other things happen. So that's why I'm voting for this, because at one point, you have to get a resolution. This has been on the books, we've been talking about it since 2000. This been on the books, we've been talking about it since 2000. So I pushed and pulled as much as I could, and I've gotten, there's so much milk you can get out of the cow after a while it starts bleeding. And you know what? That's what I'm going to do. Yeah, yeah, you know, sometimes, so the old saying, man, there's a lot of truth to that. I'm learning the hard way, but it's true.
Before we call roll. Before we call roll, I just want to, um, uh, comment that the speaker's characterization of the incident with the MetroLink, in which 11 lives were lost as an accident at a crossing, I think is, uh, complete mischaracterization of what occurred. And what we did have was a, uh, individual bent on homicide. He's currently on trial for murder in the Superior Court of Los Angeles. That's not just someone who wandered on the tracks and by mistake got caught in the crossing arms. Let's take roll call, please. Council members, Draymond?
No.
Contero?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
That is for one, A through D.
Move one, E?
One, E. Second. Yes, let's call the roll, please. Agency members, Najarian?
Yes.
Contero?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Chairman Draymond?
No.
Okay, that is the, uh, extent of our agenda.
Move adjourn for the redevelopment agency?
Second. Okay, agency is adjourned.
Move for the city council?
Second. Council is adjourned.